All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:30 PM and I'd like to call to order this November 15th meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board and Trustees. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can we have roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty?
Here.
Trustee Humphreys?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Nienberg?
Here.
Trustee Slaydeck?
Here.
President Gagani?
Here.
All right, item four is the approval of minutes from October 18, 2023. I will make a motion for two minutes.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all those abstaining? All right, we have approved the October 18 minutes. Item number five is financial matters. The October 2023 financial report and November 2023 invoices.
All right, as you can see, we got the revenue report at the 11th hour for, and that is the September revenue report that was missing from last month's packet. Again, we do not have the revenue reports from the village for this month. And just a reminder that the December meeting, even if we had it, we would not have the November financials or invoice list as it would be too early in the month. And the November and December financials will be presented in January as usual if that, if that meeting is canceled. But we do have revenue report for, or an expenditures report for October. And we are 83% through the year with 77.5% spent as of the end of October. And if you do take a look at your revenue report, you will see that our property taxes for the second payments in September were posted, and so our revenues as of the end of September are 99.4% collected. And that is 75% through the year, 99.4% collected. If anyone has any questions for me on the financials.
I mean, that approval of the financials is presented. We have a motion and a second to approve the financials as presented. Caitlin, can we proceed with the roll call, both of you?
Trustee, excuse me, Trustee Dougherty?
Yeah.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Nienberg?
Yes.
Trustee Slaydeck?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes.
All right, the financial matters have been approved as presented. All right, item number six is our public comments. Just a few reminders about public comments. We would highly encourage everyone to stay within three minutes. However, you can go ahead to a five-minute maximum. We have a maximum of 30-minute public comment session. And for time efficiency, we would encourage everyone from refraining, from applause, and talking amongst yourselves. So, that being said, in order to kind of keep the public comment section moving along, if there can, if we can start a line in the back of the room, about, you know, four or five people in line, just so we kind of have an idea of how many people we're looking at to speak as well. All right, you are welcome to begin.
Good evening, my name is Marsha Curtison. I'm a taxpaying Downers Grove resident and a library patron. I am happy to pay my taxes to maintain this wonderful library. And I thank you, trustees, for supporting this library in its effort to provide content that reflects the needs and wants of this community. I specifically thank you for maintaining a robust collection of LGBTQ+ resources. As I have previously stated, those books and materials help our LGBTQ+ kids identify with characters and situations and give our straight kids the opportunity to develop empathy and compassion as they learn about other identities. Now, I have an apology to make, Mr. Humphreys. I apologize to you for interrupting your conversation with individuals who, although they certainly don't want LGBTQ books banned, and they can't because it's against the law in Illinois, they sure don't want them visible because they promote being gay. I don't, however, apologize for being disgusted and outraged at their vague innuendos and implied suggestion that it's vile and shameful to be LGBTQ+. I also don't apologize for labeling their coded anti-gay language as bigotry. And I absolutely don't apologize for defending my child. Neither my gay son or any LGBTQ+ person should be a target of this thinly veiled rhetoric that accuses him of, by virtue of being LGBTQ, a deviant. If I were the mother of a handicapped child thanking you, the board, for promoting literature that supports kids in wheelchairs, no one would dismiss me or suggest that kids who read a book on that topic will turn disabled. First of all, let's give kids credit. Really, turn disabled? Secondly, if kids can't get reliable, credible information here, they're going to get it from YouTube, TikTok, Instagram, Snapchat, or other not known for their credibility sources. Kids are curious, kids are resilient, and kids are smart. They know that the false narratives being promulgated about themselves or their queer friends are just that, false. They're also harmful. No matter that they're couched in saccharine sweet phrases like, "I only want to protect our children," the meaning is clear. Being queer is tantamount to being a degenerate. The trauma that our LGBTQ+ youth face as a result of these cruel, bigoted messages is horrific. The trauma that we, their parents, and loved ones suffer from listening to the demonization and denigration of our children is egregious. Every loving parent invokes their child, be careful out there. We, the parents of LGBTQ+ kids, have an extra burden to caution our kids about being their authentic selves in public for fear of being bullied, harmed, or even killed. And it starts with the anti-gay language that is promiscuously thrown about at these meetings. There are zero facts to back up these deprecating statements. And there is not one speck of data to support that anyone, child or adult, anywhere, anytime, has altered their sexual orientation or gender identity by being exposed to or reading a book. I have to believe that there are those here who genuinely do not understand how hurtful and dangerous this language is. It must come from a lack of understanding. And rather than unleash my mama bear rage, as I have been known to do from time to time, I'd like to present a solution. This library offers many, many resources. Very friendly and helpful staff can direct people to materials that will provide insight into this very human condition. I'm also providing publications that are excellent at developing understanding. I will leave them on my seat for anyone to take after the meeting. No one, I promise, will turn gay. Educating oneself is broadening and powerful, and I urge everyone to learn and grow from these resources. I do caution, however, that empathy, compassion, and insight might develop as a result. Reading can do that. Thank you.
Eileen Brainerd, Downers Grove, good evening. I'm here again to reiterate my statement on the Land Acknowledgement Statement. Somehow, you're not understanding this. In paragraph six of the original statement, it reads, "The federal government and Catholic Church officials coerced Native families into sending their children to live and attend classes at boarding schools without visitation." In your cited material that has been removed, it says, "The federal Indian boarding school policy has been a collaboration of the Christian churches and the federal government since its earliest inception." The cited material does not say the federal government and the Catholic Church. That's the distinction I'm trying to make. In 1872, the Board of Indian Commissioners allotted 73 Indian agencies to various denominations. The Catholic Church received 7% of the students. 7%, that's hardly a majority. On page five of this same document, which has been removed, it reads, "The Catholics, having been initially excluded from the Board, argued fervently that the children should have the freedom to choose their religion." Further, it says, "The first appointments to the Board of Indian Commissioners were male Protestants." This remained until 1902, when two Roman Catholics were appointed to the Board. I demanded that paragraph six be changed to reflect the information in the cited material and an apology be given to the Catholic Church. In your recent revision, you changed the line in question to, "The federal government and officials from Catholic and other Christian churches coerced Native families into sending their children to live and attend classes at boarding schools without visitation." This revision still suggests that the Catholic Church was a predominant player in the school program. The library author of this change conveniently deleted Volume 38, Number Two of the legal review by the Native American Rights Fund, which shows that 7% of the students were at Catholic schools. A new document was added that shows 14 denominations took part in the schools and that there were 523 total boarding schools in the US from 1801 to present. The National Native American Boarding School Healing Coalition says that 87 of these schools were Catholic. That's less than 17% of the schools. Certainly not predominance of the schools. For further insight, there are 125 schools still open today that were or are considered Indian boarding schools. How can these schools be so egregious and be open today? Some of the schools have been opened to the public at large and are no longer just Indian schools. Harvard University is one of those schools. Certainly not all of these schools were or are bad. The current statement, as it stands, is disparaging at minimum and libelous at maximum. It's Marxist, anti-Catholic hate speech. I ask you to change the statement in dispute to read, "The federal government and Christian churches created boarding schools to carry out the assimilation of policies of the United States." It's a simple request, to clarify, not vilify. Thank you for your prompt attention to this matter.
My name is Linda Elsick, and I've been a Downers Grove resident for 38 years, and I'm a card-carrying library member. I would like to voice my support for the current Downers Grove Public Library Land Acknowledgement Statement and ask the Board to vote against the current motion to change it. I find it a thorough summary of the history of the US government's interference in the well-being and culture of the original people of this country. An interference that has lasted hundreds of years and continues even today. According to the Britannica Dictionary, genocide is the deliberate and systematic destruction of a group of people because of their ethnicity, nationality, religion, or race. The extended version of the Land Acknowledgement supports this definition. The extended narrative is not opinion. It is history and a great learning tool for our community. Staff members have done an immense amount of research and work collaboratively with Indigenous organizations and individuals to tell their story. And that's what it is. It's their story. We have no right to change it because we feel uncomfortable. I congratulate you on this enormous task that adds to our history. As time goes on, perhaps more information about the various tribes who steward the land, now known as Downers Grove, before being forced off to a reservation, will be identified and integrated into that extended narrative. May I add one suggestion? Could you perhaps add a reference list at the end of the document to identify the sources you used? That way, people have a resource to learn even more and to understand that this is history, not opinion. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Noel Manley. I'm a resident of Darien, Illinois, and I'm also a registered descendant of the white band, White Earth Band of Ajibwe Ashanishnabe. With respect to the unsupported anti-Catholic language in the Native land statement, there is news out of Canada. Two years ago, it was reported that there were mass graves of Native children at resident schools operated by the Catholic Church. The Canadian Truth and Reconciliation Commission, led by activist attorney Murray Sinclair, estimated that the number of Native children bodies to be between 15,000 and 25,000. As you might expect, these allegations generated, expected outrage, and prompted Canadian Prime Minister Justin Giroux to demand an apology from the Catholic Church. His Holiness Pope Francis I was more than happy to provide, or more than complying on this request, intended the requested apology. Subsequently, the Canadian federal government dispatched forensic teams, reformed excavations, and used ground-penetrating radar to various Catholic locations to locate these mass graves. Out of the 14 sites investigated, no bodies have been found. In other words, this was a hoax, a big lie. And what was the result of this big lie? Well, not one, not two, not three, but 68 Catholic churches in Western Canada were either vandalized, desecrated, or simply burned to the ground. As you can see, it's dangerous when a government embraces and propagates a big lie. On a related matter, I took the opportunity to review the library's social justice warrior page. I found nothing regarding the unprovoked attack and massacre of 1,400 Jews at the hands of the terrorist group Hamas. The worst execution of Jews since the Holocaust. Now, to be fair, there's a tepid antisemitism statement on the page, but that dates back to June 21st of 2021. Sadly, the silence is definite, but not unexpected as this event does not fall within the anti-hate narrative propagated by the library. Even the antisemitism in the streets of every big city, including Chicago and Skokie, Illinois, and on every college campus in America, is not addressed. This is something I've never witnessed in my entire life, this level antisemitism. And the theme here in this library is that hate has no home. However, I find that hard to believe unless... That's all I have to say, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Warner Keenan. Can I, I'm a resident of Downers Grove. And as a resident, I come before this board with the request that the motion to rewrite the Downers Grove Public Library Land Acknowledgement Statement be unanimously rejected. I make this request based on the following. During the past year, there have been groups that have made statements to this board that I have found particularly objectionable and sincerely hope that they do not represent the community in which I live. These comments have focused on minorities, LGBT, and religious groups. I have been involved with civil rights since the 1960s. I've been very much involved in speaking out against injustice that have been perpetrated on religious groups, racial minorities, ethnic groups, and the LGBT community. I appreciate the willingness to address positive contributions of Native Americans that have helped shape our nation. However, based on previous statements to the board, I would like to expand the statement to include racial minorities, religious groups, ethnic groups, and the LGBT community. Since the motion references the Downers Grove Library Statement as well as statements made by the American Library Association, I would ask that these documents be placed into the records as I will be referencing them. The American Library Association asks that we engage in a dialogue to accept and acknowledge its role in upholding unjust systems of racism and discrimination against Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Many of these issues began with the Doctrine of Discovery of 1493. The doctrine stated that Spain had the right to the lands discovered by Columbus. Pope Francis recently, or a year ago, stated, "To remember devastating experiences that took place in residential schools hurts, angers, and causes pains, and yet is necessary." It is necessary to remember how the policies of assimilation and enfranchisement, which also included the residential school system, were devastating for the people of these lands. Bishops have asked that the doctrine be repealed. I ask also that these documents be placed into the record. As a result of this, the Red Cloud Indian School has issued a statement by the Jesuit Father General Peter Han Klodnich Bog, and I quote, "I realize that we, as Jesuits, have at times been the source of some of your pain. For that, we are deeply sorry." As a result, the school has adopted a program of truth and healing which has the following points. Truth telling and admission of wrongdoing. Two, support and understanding the trauma and how it has impacted their lives and community. Three, a process of healing. Four, and new relationships and new norms are invited to be lived out. This process would be helpful to address the groups previously mentioned. Canada and Australia have made laws to address painful issues of the past, but the United States has no such laws. A bill was introduced in 2020, namely the Truth and Healing Commission of the Indian Boarding School Policy in the United States Acts, which would reflect the statement of our library. I ask that all these documents, as well as my comments, be placed into the record. I also ask that the motion be defeated, and I ask that we develop a subcommittee to address the issues of all the groups previously named for our library. Thank you.
Ed Brainerd, Downers Grove president. The Downers Grove Public Library is not safe for our children. It's a ticking time bomb. I've been speaking to this issue for over a year. And the DGPL has done little to nothing to secure the library for our kids. Here's what you claim is the library's first line of defense, to protect our children. Staff monitors the building for problems. Interns, these are kids from some college that roam the building, I guess. A new camera system. This is great, then after we have an incident, we can watch it on the video. But no mention or no police allowed in the building to protect our kids. Yet violations continue. Far too many calls to the DGPD for such issues as open drug use, open drinking, drunks in the children's room, viewing porn, fighting, foul language, and worse. So let's look at the calls that the library has made to the police department regarding such problems. I foied each, and I think we've uncovered maybe a bigger problem. I foied a timeframe, June through October 31st of this year. The library sent me in that timeframe that they were required to call the police department 15 times. I even emailed Julie saying, gee, that's remarkable. And as a matter of fact, from September through October 31st, there were no calls to the police department. Julie, you responded to me that that even surprised you. So this is your report. So let's see what the police department said. In that same timeframe, June...
Pass the mic.
The mic. The same timeframe, June through October 31st, the police department received 41 phone calls from the library. Fifteen, forty-one. In that same timeframe, that you were so proud of having no calls to the police department, they had eight calls from the library. So there must be some ghost in here or something. So my request, Julie, is that you address these discrepancies this evening. And maybe more importantly, assure the residents of Downers Grove what in the world you're doing to make this a safe place for our kids. Thank you.
Hi, Julie Brethauer. I've been a Downers Grove resident for 33 years. Just a very brief statement in support of keeping the Land Acknowledgement Statement. And just a brief paraphrase of Winston Churchill, "Those that fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." And so I think the more we acknowledge what has happened, the less chance of it happening again. Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Dice, resident of Downers Grove. Part of the quality Downers Grove as well. I think that all I wanted to say is that right now, this world is extremely frightening, is extremely hostile. There's a lot of bad things happening in the world. And we are here in a, most of us, in a place of great privilege. And because of that, I really want, Julie, you and the staff here to know what a beacon of light this library is for all of us. And I also want the board to know how much I appreciate you all for the work you do, keeping this library on path that it's been on. And Julie, your leadership has been stellar. Thank you so much. Please pass this on to the staff.
Good evening, my name is Norm Sittler. I'm a resident of Downers Grove, a taxpayer for 25 years and a resident for close to 40. So growing up in the village, I have my pops in the room here also. I just want to bring sort of a different angle to the whole thing. Spending our time rewriting history here or going through is... We can go in a whole lot of directions on that. Mine is more from a financial aspect. I'm 20 years on the village police pension board, so I have a fairly good handle of the finances of the village and how it comes about. And this board has grown to about $6.1, $6.2 million of annual expenses. And when you go over the percentage of it, I think it's important to share the actual numbers. You've now grown to just about 10% of the entire village's revenue. So if we take your expenses, couple it with police, obligations of pension funds for police and for fire, our first responders, that's approaching almost 30% of the annual budget for our village. So the message is really for everyone in the audience to understand that we sort of have an interesting setup in Illinois. We put together our budgets based on someone who works for us. We, the taxpayers, pay your salary. You ask for more money each year. You, as a group, have expanded this budget at a faster clip than any other group within the village of Downers Grove. At some point, I don't know if it's 35%, 40%, those three collective numbers that I shared are going to choke out basic necessities for us as a village to go by. So the only thing that I can see as a solution is to... So the only thing that I can see as a solution is to spin you off and become your own entity. And so I think something that we need to think about as a village is signing a petition to spin off the village, because how the budget process comes about is if they agree with everything that's signed off each year, it goes to the commissioners. The commissioners can't change it. We levy taxes against what they propose, no real check and balances. So that's not your fault. That's the way Illinois is set up. But nonetheless, if that cost goes uncontained, as you guys have grown to become a very significant budget item, it becomes problematic to run village. And so at some point, tough decisions are going to be made. So my suggestion is we, as the citizens that pay the taxes for this, really look at how do we hold you accountable from a cost-effective standpoint and keeping each other in check. And the only thing I can think at this point to think about, we sign a petition to spin off your group and vote for you separately, because right now, there is really no ability to contain it if everybody agrees on what the budgets are, except for one that sort of stands and gets berated a lot, but, you know, that's just an opinion of mine on that. But thanks for what you do, but understand your expenses are growing exponentially. And at some point, it's going to choke out some pretty basic services that we, as a village, need to operate. I think there needs to be a lot more accountability on what we do. And that's a suggestion for all of us to consider for signing a petition to put it on. Thank you.
My name is Robin Twiloff, and I've lived in Downers Grove for more than 30 years. First, I want to say how much I appreciate the library staff. For more than a year now, at each meeting, we've heard a litany of grievances. After reading the board packet, both the oppressive workload that staff manages on our behalf and the challenges it faces from being a public institution, I want to make sure that everyone who works here knows that I see you, I care about you, and I am so very grateful for how hard you work to make this the library that I love. And it warms my heart to see the positive comments from the public that are included in the board packet. Tonight, I'm here to address the motion to rewrite the library's land acknowledgement statement on tonight's agenda. I oppose this motion. It seeks to rewrite the library's land acknowledgement statement using advice from Native American representatives and sources. The library has already done this when crafting your current statement. Both with its ongoing Native American programming and in crafting the land acknowledgement statement, the library has and continues to partner with Dr. John Low, a citizen of the Potawatomi Indians and scholar of American Indian Studies, and Joseph Stanley Bear Scherans, an Ojibwe elder and founder and president of the Midwest Soaring Foundation. And as I said at the last trustee meeting, any wordsmithing of the library's land acknowledgement statement misses the point of having such a statement. I agree with the Native Governance Center, which says, quote, "Every moment spent agonizing over land acknowledgement wording is time that could be used to actually support Indigenous people," close quote. The motion states its purpose is to rewrite the statement to address offenses and deficiencies in the current statement. I refer you to my remarks at the last meeting where I cited professional references, and I'm happy to share my sources, supporting the facts around the parts of the current statement that some find offensive. That is, that the Catholic Church was a key player in the devastating colonization of the Americas, operating more Indian boarding schools in the United States than all other religious groups combined, and that the impact of the boarding school policy has been recognized by tribal nations, scholars, the Catholic Truth and Healing Organization, and many others, including Pope Francis, as one of cultural genocide and a source of intergenerational trauma with continuing effects today. I will add the further fact that by the late 19th century, fewer than 238,000 Indigenous people remained of the estimated 5 million-plus living in North America before European contact. According to University of Oregon history professor Jeffrey Yosler, who has written a book on the subject titled Surviving Genocide, "The wars waged against Native Americans from the 1600s to the 1900s differed in a fundamental way from this country's other contemporaneous conflicts." He says, quote, "Against Native nations and communities, it was genocidal war," close quote. And that is the purpose of the statement, to acknowledge the roles our ancestors played in colonizing this country and the debt and atonement we owe the first peoples of this land. The truths surrounding land dispossession are necessarily disturbing, and the historical realities are ugly. The land acknowledgement statement is not intended to make us feel good. That would be whitewashing. An acknowledgement should be discomforting and trigger uncomfortable conversations. The library reads a statement at the beginning of each trustee meeting, so we never forget the harms brought on by colonization and to remind us to seek deeper knowledge and understanding. This history is part of our violent and shameful past, and the very least we can do is admit it, reflect upon it, and find ways to do better as we move forward. So I ask the trustees not to give a second to this motion so that it dies.
All right. Trustees, we are at 30 minutes for comments.
Motion to extend public comments by 15 minutes.
All right. We have a motion to extend by 15 minutes. Wait a second. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. So we'll go until 8:20.
Good evening. I'm Laura Hoynes, resident since 38 years ago, and I want to thank Norm Sittler for his comments. I, too, have expressed the opinion that having this library break away from the village and be a separate entity with elected board members would be much more amenable to what the community needs. I don't think that this library board is serving many members of the community that have different beliefs and approaches, and I believe it's your responsibility to be accountable. I don't think that anyone could have said it better than board member Bill Nienberg several weeks ago at the board meeting. So for those members of this board and from the audience that are familiar with those comments, I would urge you to listen in, and I believe that provides all the support we need to find a way to have those petitions signed and break this library board away from the village. Thank you.
I mean, I can ask a thousand times, but chances are people won't listen. So just as a reminder, no clapping would be amazing. Thank you.
Jenna Wingham, Downers Grove resident for over 20 years. Library patron, and I want to reiterate and agree with many of the statements that were made here tonight relative to the historical fact, facts of the land acknowledgements, that history is important for us to remember and to learn from. As for breaking away from the library, library into a separate board, we have too many different organizations and agencies of government as it stands. Another one is not necessary and adds complication. I want to change gears a little bit, though, and thank you all for the Saturday coffee with the trustees. I thought it was a very good gesture, it was very well attended, and I learned some things. And I will say some of this is tongue-in-cheek, as you'll recognize. One thing I learned, and Julie may be distressed to learn, is that all of that hard work, money and effort going into a professional education is not necessary, wasted. All you need to do, according to some, is take a list of all the books that people ask for each month, and that's what you order. Doesn't matter what the collection looks like, doesn't matter if you have a balanced collection or not, but just order what people ask for, and you'll be fine. As it happens, I personally am very grateful that we have a highly trained, highly professional curator of the public library that is a nationally award-winning organization, and I think that that is very telling for the staff to be proud of. So thank you for going to library school, Julie. The second thing I learned is that establishing or creating and putting out book lists that libraries have been doing forever is somehow promoting a particular ideology. Now, what ideology historical romance novels promotes, I have no idea. But if the, but I am grateful that staff take the time to prepare lists of different topics and books that are available of interest to the general public is a perfectly fine example of good circus for the public, and I hope you'll keep doing that. So I also hope you'll keep doing the coffees. I think that they are a positive event and helpful for the community to get to know you.
Hello. My name is Audrey Stern, and I'm here to add my voice to those asking for the board not to pass the motion to rewrite the DGPL land acknowledgement statement. I'm not generally opposed to making revisions to the statement. As the library itself states on its website, "The DGPL land acknowledgement is a living statement resulting from conversations and collaboration made of organizations and individuals. It may be refined as we continue to grow as an organization." However, it seems to me that this particular motion is not a sincere attempt at revision, but an effort to obscure the well-researched and truthful history that the statement acknowledges. The current acknowledgement does not seek to divide the community, as is alleged in this motion, but is intended to unite us in a shared commitment toward truth, justice, and self-reflection. The library staff and Native organizations and individuals who worked to create the current acknowledgement put an enormous amount of time, thought, and effort into researching and writing every bit of it, which this motion fails to recognize. I'd like to thank all of the board members who spoke in support of the acknowledgement and library's programming at the October meeting. I'm grateful to the board and to the library staff for your continued efforts in creating an inclusive place for everyone in our community. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Hillary Denk. I've been coming to this library since I was in second grade, and I just am impressed as hell with the great work you guys have done in broadening the services available to our community and educating our community and making it welcoming to everybody. And I just want to thank each and every one of you and your staff and the board. I do want to speak to the motion. I don't think it's necessary to revise the statement. As a Catholic since birth, Catholics need to acknowledge their complicity in what happened to the Native people of this country, of Canada. And they have. If you look at information online from the diocese throughout this country and in Canada, there is a great level of understanding and acknowledgement of the mistakes that were made and trying to connect with the Native people who are still with us to atone for that. So I don't think removing Catholic from that as one of the largest and most prominent Christian organizations in this, in the world, I think it makes perfect sense to keep the statement as it is. And with regard to some movement to break off the library as a separate entity, I think that certainly could be studied. It's still going to be a taxing body, so any thoughts that this would reduce our taxes really probably isn't the, would be the impetus for such a decision. We are incredibly proud of our award-winning library, and we do not want the services and the staff to be cut. So that, and I think if you did a survey at the community, I think it'd be pretty clear that we're very proud of the library and the work it's doing, in however form it exists. So thank you so much for listening this evening.
Right. Got about six minutes left, if anyone has any last comments before we close the comment portion.
Dennis Burke, resident of Downers Grove, 34 years. I'm in favor of amendment. I'm a Catholic also, but I'm also Irish, and I understand the bigotry that's behind anti-Catholic bigotry. So when I read that statement, it kind of hit home to me. I don't think maybe the court understands that. We, Hillary, we go to block parties together, where we disagree, and that's fine. It's just that I think if, you know, we do acknowledge that, you're right, and anyone else who said that, you're right, we do acknowledge that. But I think singling out the Catholics really is not the right thing to do. The government, yeah, we know it, the churches were involved, we know that. Why you're singling them out, the Catholics, I'm not sure about that. They're really, in the age of, you know, antisemitism's growing, now we're going to have anti-Catholicism? I don't know. I hope not. I do appreciate your time here and listening to me, and I so hope you get a consideration to, just to amend it a little bit and, you know, make history right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. We will be moving on to trustee comments.
I'll go? Okay. So I am the author of the motion that's the star of the show tonight, I guess, and I'd like to address the board and the community on why I feel the way I do about our land acknowledgement statement. Let me start with my point of view, my understanding about, in layman's terms, what a land acknowledgement statement should do. In its pure form, I believe it is a statement that should recognize the heritage of Native Americans, acknowledge the fact that they were the caretakers of our land before European settlers arrived, long before our country was formed, honors their contributions to our culture, and gives support for keeping their heritage alive today. So, sorry to disappoint you, I'm very much in favor of a land acknowledgement statement. I have no issue with the concept. I applaud and value the efforts to recognize our collective heritage, and I also recognize the importance of taking an honest appraisal of our history, the good and the bad. Certainly, the Catholic Church has gone through its own examination and confronted its own grave mistakes, and this is part of the healing process. But like many things, something that is good and well-intentioned can also be turned into an instrument of division and destruction. So what's the issue? When our land acknowledgement statement was adopted several years ago, the library staff and the board chose to include two, what I believe are radical elements that I think are unnecessarily divisive and even dangerous. And I'll come back to the dangerous part, because it sounds like a dramatic word, but I think it's appropriate in this case. First, our land acknowledgement statement invoked accusations of genocide against Native Americans. In using the word genocide, the library chose to apply a modern context to historical events and a horrible context at that. This is a tactic we see often these days. It's become part of the standard cancel culture playbook. A little history. The word genocide was not even invented until the 40s. It was in the wake of Hitler's campaign to eradicate the Jews. It is defined, not in the revised versions of the definition, but in the original definition, genocide, the deliberate and systematic destruction of a group of people because of their ethnicity, nationality, religion, or race. The term is derived from the Greek genus, race, tribor, nation, and the Latin side, killing. Now, there's no doubt that there were fierce battles between Native Americans and European settlers. There is no doubt there were atrocities likely on both sides of that battle. There's no doubt that Native Americans did experience displacement and forced assimilation, and they have felt the generational effects from that that continue to this day. But genocide, is that true to the historical details or the outcome? Is it a fair or accurate characterization that captures the context of that time? Or is it just another example of inflammatory rhetoric that's being used to divide people? Now, what's the Catholic connection? And I'm going to try to avoid repeating, because we must have stumbled across the same research. The library's land acknowledgement statement goes on to state that Catholic and other Christian churches coerced Native families into sending their children to live and attend classes at boarding schools without visitation. Terrible, right? It's true that there were Native American schools that were established by the federal government. Catholic schools, and my research confirms what Mrs. Briner found, accounted for less than 10% of the students and less than 20% of the facilities. It's not the same exact numbers you had, but it's close. They were not a singular and dominant force, and if you research this on the internet, you'll find numerous apologies from numerous religions, Christian religions, accounting for their role in that period of our history. And I'm sure there were injustices that occurred in these boarding school environments, and there's no doubt that the goal was to assimilate Native Americans. And if today, if it was today, we would have different sensibilities and sensitivities, no doubt. We also know that there were good works and compassionate acts at these schools. Many of these schools are still around today, and they're engaged in the sincere and often thankless work of education, not assimilation. And that doesn't excuse the injustices, but the complete picture in the historical context is important. At the time, this was an inglorious part of forming what became our glorious nation. Should we atone for these injustices? Should we take steps to raise and honor Native American culture and history? Absolutely, I believe this has been the case. I happen to 100% agree that a constructive land acknowledgement statement can be part of that healing process and that atonement process. So what's a constructive land acknowledgement statement look and sound like? Well, look no further than our neighbors in Glen Ellen. Here is their statement. "The Glen Ellen Public Library is grateful for its place in the village of Glen Ellen and the land we are able to inhabit. We acknowledge the peoples who are here long before the village was formed." Then it goes on to recognize the actual tribes by name, saying, "The people of these tribes care for this land as stewards of the river, the wildlife, the plants which flourish." And then it finishes up by making it relatable to our community, saying they inhabited the villages in the areas, including those in what are now Churchill Woods and the Morton Arboretum. Big difference from our statement, big difference in tone, in content. That statement honors Native Americans, it appreciates and recognizes their core values. It actually inspires you to learn more about their heritage and history. It's positive, constructive, and unifying. Unfortunately, that statement stands in stark contrast to the DGPL's lengthy diatribe, which is barely specific to local tribes, and reads more like a manifesto than an honorary piece. The statement concludes with, "We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-native settlers and the ongoing injustices against native peoples." This is read at the opening of every board meeting, it's even displayed in our children's area, substituting genocide with just killed. What's behind this? Why would the library choose to adopt such an extreme version of a land acknowledgement statement? In addition to Glen Ellen, the Morton Arboretum, the Illinois University System, the Conservation Society, they all have land acknowledgement statements that manage to honor the Native Americans without invoking genocide, diminishing our nation, or singling out the Catholic Church in the process. We know why this happens, right? We understand this dynamic all too well, we see it often these days. We've seen it done to Thomas Jefferson, to Christopher Columbus, to our National Anthem, to our Pledge of Allegiance. When you tear down institutions, traditions, love of country, and faith, you know what backfills that void. Anarchy and anything goes, amorality is free to flourish. Now, I'm not saying our library staff or board are anarchists, but it's not hard to find the motive. Search on Illinois Library Association's Best Practices for Land Acknowledgement Statements, and you'll find an article co-authored by members of the DGPL staff. Here's what it says about a land acknowledgement statement. "The ultimate goal was to call out and name the exact harm done." The ultimate goal was to name the harm done. That is a pretty singular focus, and it leaves aside honoring, remembering, valuing, calling out the heritage and history and values and contributions of Native Americans. It reduces them to the harm done, what was done to them. I don't think that's what our land acknowledgement statement should be. Another article, also co-written by a DGPL member, "Land Acknowledgement's A Mindful Approach," lists, shocking, white supremacy culture characteristics, it's one of its main references, and points to in the article, "The characteristics of white supremacy culture that uphold systemic oppression and restrict marginalized people from fully showing up as their true and authentic selves." So they're not anarchists, they're just part of the Disney movement that values victims and victimhood, looks for the injustice in everything, and they're happy to destroy anything that they perceive to be the proponents or beneficiaries of that injustice. And they're happy to pull our library into the fray. It's pretty revealing as to who they are serving. Is it the ILA? Or is it our town? Is it our village? Is it our neighbors? Is it our local members of Native American dissents? Just that. Regardless, the net result is a check-the-box virtue signaling guilt trip that does nothing to benefit Native Americans, but plenty to disparage our nation and the Catholic Church. So what, you might ask? Who cares about a land acknowledgement statement? Somebody said, why are we wasting our time on this? And at the start, I called out the divisive and destructive elements of the statement, but is that too much? Is it really destructive? Well, as the gentleman recounted, in 2021, when the Canadian allegations about mass graves on Catholic residential schools happened, it gained national and even international attention, and the expected backlash ensued. Churches were burned. I didn't know about the number of churches that were vandalized, but I know about the number of churches that were burned. The prime minister called it "fully understandable outrage." Hate crimes directed at Catholics rose by 260%. Priests and nuns were spat upon. In the media, these schools became the sensationalized equivalent of Nazi concentration camps. The Pope issued an apology, as you alluded to, which of course wasn't good enough and became additional fuel for the outrage. In the U.S., that also happened to Catholic purge, nothing was burned, I don't think, but there were several instances of vandalizing and I think a few instances of arsons, arson that were put out, in sympathy with the Canadian allegations. Two years later, excavations revealed nothing, they had no human remains, there was no basis for the accusations, but they did result in real damage and sparked real hate crimes against Catholics. The media predictably barely reported on the incorrect initial assumptions. The tribe that leveled the accusations said little, the prime minister didn't apologize. However, many Native American tribes, to their credit, did speak out against the atrocities that were committed against the churches, to their credit. So destructive is no understatement. We know what happens when ethnicities, cultures, and religions are pitted against each other. We can watch it playing out on the nightly news in Israel and Ukraine. Recently, the board had a chance to amend our land acknowledgement statement. Concerned Catholics residents of Downers Grove and actual area descendants of Native Americans lobbied the board to remove the attack that singled out the Catholic Church. Instead, the library staff just simply added citations to the statement, but left it unchanged otherwise, and as we heard from Ms. Briner, the citations didn't accurately reflect the cited materials. So tonight, I have introduced a motion to have the land acknowledgement statement suspended. Establish a committee made up of residents and local Native American descendants and representatives that can be tasked with revising the statement. Not getting rid of it, I'm not trying to get rid of the statement, I'm not trying to ignore history, I'm not trying to avoid the opportunity to atone for the injustices. But our land acknowledgement statement is a one-dimensional statement. It only points to the harm, the injustices, and in my opinion, it reduces Native Americans to much less than their full value and the full contributions that they've made to our I don't have high expectations that this is going to pass, but I hope that this board will join in taking a step away from being divisive, from pitting groups against each other, and towards unity and respect for all, all people, all groups. We don't, we need, I think there's value in having a land acknowledgement statement, but ours can be better. Thank you for your attention.
Since last month's meeting, I've had the opportunity as a trustee to speak directly with a lot of patrons. The last farmer's market of the season was October 21st. I spoke to several community members, got to hand out some books to children, sign some people up for library cards. It's always a rewarding experience to volunteer. I just get to talk to people directly. It was the same day as our coffee with, with the trustees, and that was really enjoyable for me. I only got to be here for about 30 minutes because I had to go to the farmer's market. But I spoke to actually several of you who were here in the audience today, and I think we talked a little bit about what the library's facing, what Downers Grove is facing, and we found some common ground on things that I think we all feel strongly about, and I appreciate everyone who was able to attend. At the end of the month, along with, alongside two other trustees, I was able to attend the ILA conference in Springfield. We met with other trustees from all over the state, we had opportunities to attend seminars regarding issues libraries are facing, presentations on best practices, and have conversations with other trustees to better understand our role and how best to serve our community. Most importantly, to reaffirm our commitment to the purpose of a public library, our bylaws, the library bill of rights, and our commitment to our community. I'd like to say a few words on the land acknowledgement. I said a lot of this last month, so I, those of you who heard it already, I apologize. It should go without saying, but it seems it must be said, that Indigenous people, there are some who do not agree with the statement. But like all other groups, Indigenous peoples are not a monolith. Kimberly Morales Johnson of the Gabrielle Tongva people states, "The acknowledgement of the land is a way of transforming and undoing the intentional erasure of Indigenous peoples and people of the land." It seems to me that it's been suggested this statement was made in haste and without thought or research or communication with Indigenous peoples. The team, as I mentioned last month, are experts in their field. The DGPL staff began researching February 22nd of 2021. By March, they had already reached out to Dr. John Low, professor at the Ohio State University, citizen of the Pakuan Band of Powhatan Indians, also the director of the Newark-Brentwood Center, who's also the author of several books and articles on Indigenous peoples. He is an expert. They also consulted and worked alongside Joseph Daniel Bertrand from the Midwest Soaring Cup Foundation. There were hours of research, conversations, board meetings, drafts, followed by more conversations and more research, and then a beautiful formal announcement and ceremony at Vishal Park with native dancers performing a traditional healing dance. None of this was done in a vacuum. Truths were told and acknowledged. The word genocide, I said this last month, and I'm going to say it again, is a very heavy word, is never to be taken lightly or thrown out casually. I have said this at meetings. We learn and grow from acknowledging our past, facing our past so as not to repeat it in the future, and so we as a community and country can take heed and make sure it never happens again. These are the uncomfortable truths of our country. Whole cultures, languages, and peoples were wiped out. That is not an exaggeration. The severity of what happened should never be softened to our comfort. In acknowledging the past, we can move together in the future. DGPL is doing the work that is required of this statement. There is programming, book talks, bundles, and a full recap was given at last month's meeting, and you can look it up on the website, there is a list, and I think someone asked about sources, there are sources that were researched also available on the website. But lastly, I would be amiss if I didn't say a few words about the incredible programs that were provided this month. The teen services held a scary movie night with the highest number of teens ever in attendance, 18 teens. An outreach event at Oak Trace, the adult teen services department and the circulation department worked together. They gave book talks, they helped with e-readers, they signed up 14 residents at Oak Trace with library cards. The kids' room had their own high attendance numbers, with 140 kids and then 173 kids attending Halloween storytimes. Full attendance at a Baby Bob Halloween event with kids in costumes, 20 babies and their caregivers attended. I would say that patrons, especially many parents and many children, feel very safe with this library. All these amazing things are happening or being provided by DGPL, this five-star library. Hundreds of people of all ages are engaged, learning, growing, playing, and even challenging themselves to experience and learn something new. I invite you all to do the same.
I'd like to say something about the attendance at the ILA meeting, too. If I heard one more positive comment about Julie, I was going to buy her a crown. She was the queen of the ILA. Everywhere we would go with the Downers Grove trustee named Hags on, people would say, you're in the Downer, from the Downers Grove Library, what a great library, you have a terrific director, can we steal her? And I was approached by a couple of downstate libraries for a copy of the land acknowledgement, because they liked the thoroughness of it as opposed to just a surface one. Doesn't mean that we can't continue to discuss things. I've been doing a deep dive myself into the controversy surrounding land acknowledgement since I wasn't a part of all of that being new on the board. But I was very gratified to go to a statewide meeting and see how outsiders view this library.
I'm not going to say anything specifically about the land acknowledgement, I think Farnale did a great job with her comments. I did want to tie together a couple things that Marty and Farnale just said, and just kind of express my gratitude to Julie especially for giving us so, the trust trustees, so many opportunities, especially this year, to connect with the community and to be a part of things that are happening in the library. It was something several of us had kind of talked about the last year about, we really would like to hear more from you, we really would like to be part of the farmer's market and some of the other activities, the breakfast with the board, and it's been really great to have some of those things in place this year. And some of the opportunities outside of the library, like the ILA, which I wasn't able to attend, but it sounded wonderful. Some other opportunities are the legislative meetup that's coming up, you're invited to participate in a trustee learning portal that the Illinois Heartland Library System put together. We're getting a lot of opportunities to expand what we know about our own library, but also about being alive and being part of a library in this country right now. And so I just wanted to express my appreciation for those opportunities, and I'm going to go with the law this year and have to continue to learn about our library and my little costume, even into my event here as a guest. Thank you.
Just a couple of things, I'm not going to do a lot of repeating, but first I want to thank everybody for being here. You know, I spent a lot of years on this board, and most of the time the room was empty, but I'm glad there are a lot of people that are interested in what we are doing, so thank you for being here. And also thank many of you for being here for the coffee with the board that we had, what was that, a couple of weeks ago? And I think we're going to do that again, probably again. So, thank you for that also. I'm not going to repeat what Farnale said about the land acknowledgement statement. When that first came up, first, my first reaction was why? And then I did some research and some reading and talked to some Native American people, and I learned why. And we did, and the library staff did the lion's share, but the board also did some research and verified the information and passed what we believed, and I still believe is a very accurate portrayal of history, not the present, but history. I might add that my church, it's right across the street here, derives its history, a major part of its history is the pilgrims. And the pilgrims are romanticized a lot these days, but in fact, if you read history, they were very much a part of the genocide which took place, but that was then. My church has issued many apologies for that, the Catholic Church has issued many apologies. The nation of Canada has issued apologies for mistakes that it made, both in past and more contemporary history. But that doesn't change history. And I believe that the land acknowledgement that we have and we approved and then reapproved a few months ago stands, and I will not support removing it. Doesn't mean it can never be changed, but removing it is something I can't do. I do want to point out that there are, right in the statement that we read at the beginning of this meeting is the line, "We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present." That acknowledges both past and the contemporary Native American First Nations people, both then and now. There's another line in here, "Across the nation and the world, natives peoples continue their profound respect for the land as well as for water and air and live in harmony with nature." So I don't think we're So I don't think we're at all condemning. One other side point, I think one of the reasons we didn't name the tribes here that on this land where we now sit is that there's, history is not totally consistent and accurate about exactly which tribes were here. There's pretty much consensus that there were thirteen tribes here. And listing them all started looking like, well, what order do you list them in? Do you list them in time, terms of age, or alphabetically, or what? And so the decision was made not to list them at all. So I was part of that vision. The word genocide is a new word, was invented, I read in that bill in the 1940s, but we use a lot of words today that didn't, to amplify them to history, that didn't exist when the history was happening. So I don't really think that's a, at least I cannot accept that direct criticism of the word. And I have read many definitions of that word, and there are many different definitions of that word that cover a lot of ground. But almost all of the ones I read apply. We displaced, we killed, we... I'm searching for the word that was applied to the schools. The schools were awful. Some of those schools still exist, but they're not awful anymore. But that, again, doesn't change history. But the assimilation of many, many tribal groups from what they were for all of their history into, and trying to westernize them and change their clothing and their history and their languages and so forth, I felt, quite honestly, that use a form of genocide. I can go on and on on this, but I've done a lot of research myself, and I firmly believe that it's an accurate use of the word. Talked a lot about Canada. I love Canada, but we're not Canada, so I don't want to talk too much more about Canada here. I think that's enough for now. Again, thank you for being here and expressing your beliefs and your feelings.
I will not be addressing the land acknowledgement. I think my fellow trustees did a wonderful job of that. I was proud to represent the Downers Grove Public Library at the Illinois Library Association Conference in Springfield. Several trustees and I took time out of our schedules and away from our families to continue to learn more about our roles as trustees. In addition, we met several trustees who had renovations done at their libraries, and we are looking forward to touring their facilities and brainstorming for our library and the coming improvements that we'd like to see. For those that are unfamiliar with the role of the Illinois Library Association, they are a professional organization that helps disseminate important library-related legislative and financial information to all libraries. In addition to that, they provide countless opportunities for training and allow our library staff to quickly connect with other libraries for best practices. One thing I do want to address regarding the ILA conference that I want to talk about. Unfortunately, an individual that I served with on my elementary school PTA decided to screen grab a shot from my personal social media and share it with an individual that I know many of you are well acquainted with. This picture included the, quote, "Here's a picture of radical leftist DGPL members" and, quote, "Evil scumbags." I'm sure some of you already saw this since you're connected with him. This is not the first time that I and other trustees have been bullied and harassed. Last year I was screened at in the middle of downtown Downers Grove. I'm not the sole recipient of this harassment. Staff have the unfortunate task of receiving a lot of the verbal assaults at their place of employment. I at least have the, quote, "luxury" of not having to be here every day. This culture of bullying must stop. The aggressive attacks must stop. I committed myself to community service to teach my children about volunteerism, and now I have to worry about being seen with my kids in public because they would be identified and I'll be assaulted right in front of that. Downers Grove is a community that my husband and I specifically picked out of many different options because we felt like this would be a secure and welcoming place for our family. But it gets worse every single year.
A library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please bring me, I don't seem wish to check out, to the subchests or the first floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Thank you.
What my goal is as a trustee is to highlight all the amazing things that the library has, and I want to start refocusing my energy away from the negativity and the lies. I do want to thank Jen for her hard work this month migrating to the new incident tracker and going the extra mile to make sure that everyone received training on it. A really amazing stat that Jen reported in her report was that the staff has answered close to seventy thousand reference questions in 2023 so far. Seventy thousand, that is an astonishing number, and it makes me so grateful for our talented staff and knowledgeable staff. I want to thank the ATS team for continuing to support the community in so many ways, including outreach work to Oak Trace, as well as hosting a practice ACT test for high schoolers. Erin Lindstram Meyer in our kids' department continues to be a rock star. If your child has gone to school anywhere in Downers Grove, they know her. My kids know her by name because she touches every single part of education, whether it's school events, scouting, community events, you name it. She's famous. And to follow my theme of outreach, I want to thank the staff and trustees who have volunteered at the time of the farmer's market, concert in the park, local programs. The numbers of people that we encountered and had a chance to meet was wonderful. It is a great way to get a broader perspective on how much the library is appreciated, as board meeting attendance is not at all an accurate display of the entire community sentiment. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to library directors' reports.
I have a bunch of stuff. First off, we had a sample statistical report last month. You guys gave some feedback on it. The board really said that they preferred the Northbrook sample that you had received previously that was infographic-heavy. Our marketing staff has since attended a marketing conference with the Northbrook staff and discovered that Northbrook has stopped doing their statistics that way due to the amount of time and with a very, very staff-intensive and laborious process to put that together every month. And so they have reverted to a statistical report that looks a lot more like the sample that we had given you last month. So Cindy Cattrie, our marketing and communications manager, and Jen, our assistant director, who is in charge of compiling our stats every month, are working on a kind of hybrid model that will be a little more graphical, but will better present the different statistics. So be on the lookout for more changes to come in the statistical reports.
I just have a really good question about this. I'm forgetting my name. So is there, so you provide a kind of raw data all the time when you give the log? I mean, actually, do we get a lot of the log and reference numbers and circulation and all that? Is there any reason why you need to have a whole kind of dashboard and graphical presentation every month? Could it be more periodic? So for example, could it be every quarter or twice a year so that we can get? Because I think even looking month-to-month, it's difficult to see patterns and trends. Looking several months, yeah, that's when you start getting, oh yeah, this is going up or this is going down. Here's how it compares. So having less frequent but more visual might, that might be an approach?
Like three months at a time?
Yeah. Yeah. Or just doing something more fancy and, you know, obviously, yes, I know how time-intensive those visuals can be, but if that was, you know, a couple times a year rather than literally every month, which I know is tricky, that might help us all kind of see this little big picture of things visually, but also reduce the workload of staff, because I know it's tricky.
So again, look for those, for some samples coming to you as we figure out what really works for you, because this is really at the board's behest to put that information together and present it in the way that you want to see it.
And we're getting the emails with the reports as they come in now, too. So if those are interested in a more detailed day-by-day tracking, it's available.
Yes.
So that's a good point.
All right. On the land acknowledgement, I just wanted to reiterate that the citations were updated in August of 2023, and that was stated at the time it was approved by the board. The links on the website are all live, and there is a resources section on the bottom of the page. There is an FAQ that lists not only why specific tribes were not listed, but also the answers to some more of the questions that were asked here, so go and check it out. If you want to watch the board meetings where the original land acknowledgement was discussed at length and approved unanimously, that was August 2021, you can view the entire recording. It's on our website. And then the update, that was August 2023. Again, you can view the entire recording. It's on the website. If anyone needs any help finding that, feel free to email our wonderful reference staff with that reference question that will then be added to the over seventy thousand reference questions asked so far this year. On safety and security, we do have security monitors here at the library who work, and there is someone on duty every hour that the library is open. And they do monitor the behavior of people throughout the library. They carry walkie-talkies, they go where they are needed. We do have security cameras to help us monitor and to record for when we need that information. Our social work interns are from Aurora University. They can be bachelor's, master's, or PhD students, depending on the individual student, and they help, directly help our folks who need access to social services, and they do things like they recently helped someone get VA housing. They have helped people find, get resources about identification, disability payments. They connect people to resources, and that is a wonderful program. And the stipends for the social work interns are paid by our wonderful Downers Grove Public Library Foundation. So we are so grateful to have them and their support for that, to help connect people to resources. As for the FOIA that Mr. Breiner spoke of, he FOIA'd specifically for DGPL calls to the police, and that is what he received. I don't know what's in the Downers Grove Police Department's records, so I cannot speak to that. I can say that we do have people who will call the police for things that have happened out in the parking lot, on the grounds, personal interactions that call the police and don't, that isn't the library calling the police. So, and we also have quite a few calls that are medical rather than police calls. So there is a difference between calling the police and calling for paramedics. For our budget, there is a very fundamental difference in the way the library and the village are funded. In the state of Illinois, the primary funding for public libraries is property taxes. That is the way the state of Illinois constitution puts it, that's what the statutes say. That's the way we're funded. Ninety-six percent of our funding is property taxes. The village receives approximately, and I may be off on this percentage, but about thirty to thirty-five percent of their funding is property taxes. And a large amount of their funding is things like fees that they can control separate from property taxes. The library does not have that source of revenue available. Ninety-five percent property tax funded, so it's going to be your property taxes. And I will say that this library look back at our tax levy history and put it through an inflation calculator, because this library is not keeping up with inflation. So we are doing more with less every year. And the library's tax rate has fallen every year since 2016. Every year it has gone down. So you are paying today less than what you did in 2016. As for creating a separate entity, creating a library district instead of being a village board, with an elected board, there also come costs. As a village library, this library and any municipal library is a part of the village or municipality's franchise agreement for utilities, which means most, the biggest impact is the lights. The electricity for this building is not paid by the library. It is part, like a village building, it is part of the franchise agreement. We do not have to pay that cost. If we were a library district, we would be paying for electricity. And that is only one of the many benefits of being a village library. We have economies of scale, our finances are taken care of by the village, they run all the checks, we use their finance software, their payroll system, all of those things would become direct costs. So there is a substantial cost to not being part of the village. So it's very important.
Claire, are you suggesting the cost of electricity is different on whether we're a separate entity or part of the village?
No, the village does not pay for their electricity. It is, as part of the franchise agreement with ComEd, they do not receive an electricity bill. This library does not receive an electricity bill. We don't pay for it.
The village pays for it.
It's part of their, the village does not pay for electricity either. It's part of the franchise agreement with the electrical company. So none of the village buildings pay for their electricity.
We do.
We do.
Yeah. Taxpayers, you.
You love the amount that goes to the village for the electricity.
This is not public comment time. This is the director's report time.
I didn't know that. It's interesting.
And as for, you know, books that the library has, we don't own every single book that every single person in Downers Grove wants. We don't own every book that I want. I recently got a book through interlibrary loan. So this library, no single library can own every single book. That's why resource sharing among Illinois libraries is so critical. It's why we have regional library systems that provide delivery service so that we can have that economy of scale to where there are libraries cooperating throughout the entire state, and we can get you that book even if we don't have it. And that's what cooperation is all about. It's what resource sharing of the multi-type Illinois library systems is all about, and it's something that this state is known for. We've been doing for decades, and we are very proud of this system, and I believe it works really well. So if there is ever anything that you need that's not on our shelves, again, ask those wonderful librarians, and they will help you get it. And then I just have a couple of prepared remarks. I want to address the negativity and toxicity at board meetings over the past, just over a year, and how it's affecting both our current and our future staff. We've had numerous staff reports about being confronted and harassed in the community. For some, it's been while working or taking a break in our downtown. Some have been confronted not in the library, while in line at the grocery store, at a children's birthday party, walking with their families in... grocery store, at a children's birthday party, walking with their families in town, playing with their children in their own driveway. They are confronted by people who recognize them as library workers, and often with the same name-calling and negativity that's been displayed during public comments at previous board meetings. These are staff who are just trying to live their lives. And I call on every one of you to bring civility back for your library staff, because they are simply living their lives in this community, just like you. And they do not deserve to be confronted outside of work for decisions being made by the organization, by the Board. They should be able to play with their children in their own driveway without having to send their children to the backyard, because they are being verbally harassed. The same negativity at board meetings is also affecting our applicant pools for future staff. Managers doing hiring now get questions about the Board's support for staff, about staff safety, and how are staff treated by community members. We've had lower number of applicants than in previous years, even though DGPL is a five-star library and pays well. The negativity is now something that the Downers Grove Library is known for in the Illinois library professional community. People that do apply refer to our EDI work as something that draws them as applicants, including our land acknowledgement. But our good work is being overshadowed by the negativity, name-calling, harassment. And I ask you to remember this when you're making your public comments, that your library, I have been called a pedophile, a groomer.
By whom?
Not me, not by me.
No one said you. First of all, okay, stop.
Works for whom?
We, we all, we all could show courtesy while public comments were going on.
She is scolding us without, without.
I'm sorry if you seem, if you have reflections in her comments. She never said you. She never, she never mentioned anybody.
Names, who, what, when, and where.
That's completely unnecessary. Let her finish, let her finish, let her finish her You are welcome to leave, sir, if you've had enough.
I encourage you all to remember that we are people too, deserving of respect and courtesy. Despite these challenges, our staff shows up every day and does fantastic work. DGPL is having a positive impact on this community every day. We are living up to our mission of welcoming all to discover, grow, play, and learn. Our staff deserves to be acknowledged for their fantastic work. So let me share two big highlights with you, from our recent statistics. First, we set a new monthly digital checkout record in October of 2023, checking out 15,655 items. This is even before our new budget year with increased funding for electronic resources, and it includes all platforms like Libby and Comics Plus. To put that in perspective, our previous highest month total had been 14,809, set back in July. Our average monthly digital checkouts, January through October, was 14,207. So this latest total is quite an increase. And to give even more perspective on that, the average monthly total of digital checkouts in 2022 was 12,554 items. So in a year, we have more, increased by almost 20%. Our adult and teen services manager, Van McGary, is optimistic that with our increased budget in the next year, that we will easily reach 20,000 digital checkouts per month on average. And for our kids' room programs, to this point last year, we had had 398 regular programs with 8,864 kids attending. Through that same period in 2023, we've had 460 regular programs, but 18,088 kids attending. Yeah, that was 62 more programs this year, but 10,000 more attendees. Let that sink in. 10,000 more kids so far this year at library events than last year. And we haven't even gotten to gingerbread storytime yet. This will be the first year since the pandemic with all of the downtown tree lighting events, and we are expecting hundreds of kids and their families here at the library for gingerbread storytime. So come and join us on the day after Thanksgiving for the tree lighting event. Clearly, a lot of people are getting their library needs met. Our staff is out there doing a fabulous job, and I hope everyone in our community can give them the support that they deserve, so they can continue to make a positive impact on this community every day. We are going to move on to item nine, new business. A is the proposal for professional architectural services for planning study. And this speaks to the strategic plan initiatives that we had around space for teens, physical accessibility from the Forest Avenue parking lot, and, sorry, makerspace, and nursing, sensory, and calming areas in the library. Those were all identified during our strategic retreat sessions as priorities for, for the strategic plan. And so this proposal puts up, would be to move forward with a process with product architecture, our architectural firm for many years, to do a building and space assessment to determine how to, what fits where, and how to move forward with that. The culmination of this, once the Board has selected options, would then be, the idea would be to have those priced out by Shales McNutt Construction, the construction management firm that we work with, to look at what those various options may cost, and then the Board could move forward from there. So it's really the, the first step in the planning process.
I will motion to approve the proposal for professional architectural services planning study as presented.
Check time.
All right, so you've got a motion, and two seconds, take them, for voting. All those in favor.
Any discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I noticed they, this is a firm we use a lot, but they have, one of the line items in the proposal is to do a baseline set of drawings. Do they not have a baseline set of drawings?
To update the baseline set of drawings for the areas that we are looking at. There are some things that we have changed.
I have a question too, Julie, about the ramp, the mobility ramp. I'm still confused exactly, where does the village start and where do we?
Okay, so, so on the Forest Avenue parking lot side, basically everything from the curb of the parking lot coming toward the building is the libraries. And everything that's parking lot itself is the villages. The exception being at the far end, where the ramp goes down, that is part of the public sidewalk, where the ramp leaves from, where the ramp begins, from the far corner of the Forest Avenue lot, that is the village owed.
So would there need to be any kind of coordination with the village on how that that section gets done?
If that part is part of what we're, we're looking.
I just wanted to understand.
The overall feedback that we got was that people want to be able to access the building from the parking lot side without having to go all the way to that far end. So something that would be more integrated with this entryway. So if we need to coordinate, if there is something that, that might be done with the village, then as we identify those, we would bring the village into the planning process to talk about what is feasible. But we will be starting with, with only the library's problem.
Any other comments or questions?
No, just to emphasize, I think, that, you know, a significant part of this plan is going to be to improve the physical accessibility for this building, for everybody, for all of our public. And that was a, that was a significant thing that was brought up in the focus groups that we held in leading up to the development of the strategic plan. So this is something we need to do.
All right, we have other comments. We'll go ahead and take this to a vote, since there is a price attached to this to our public church.
Trustee Torney?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Nienberg?
Aye.
Trustee Slade?
Yes.
President Gagami?
Yes.
The proposal for professional architectural services for planning study has been approved. Item B is the personnel policy update for a discussion.
The, as you can see, there are some significant changes. There are also quite a few that are more cleanup, editing, inclusion of things like the business office manager, which was not a position that we had in the last, the last time we updated this, this policy. But the most significant changes are to vacation, the section on vacation, the section on holidays, the child extended bereavement leave, which is needed for compliance, paid parental leave, and tuition reimbursement. For those of us who have been, for those of them who have been following along with the library of, since pre-pandemic, you may remember that the library was discussing implementing paid parental leave and tuition reimbursement for staff in 2019. We did not move forward with that in 2020, as had originally been contemplated. And so, back around. The, what I am seeking right now from the Board is direction, if there is anything that you would like to see changed back before we have the policy vetted by HR and legal consultants to make sure that we are in compliance in all areas.
I don't have any issue with the verbiage of what's changed, but when we bring something like this to the Board that has a clear cost associated with it, but we don't quantify the cost, that only adds to this perception of financial, I'll just call it insensitivity. So adding holiday pay has a cost, adding paid parental leave has a cost, the tuition reimbursement has a cost. Do we know what that cost is?
Well, with holiday, these, we budget for staff expenses for 52 weeks of the year.
This is a change, right?
Yes. So if they are being paid for that time now, it would be whether the library is open or closed at that time.
They're being paid for it now, and if the library's closed right now, they're not being paid for it. Right? I understand the change. This is to extend holiday pay to part-time employees when the library's closed right now. That's the change?
Yes, ours, but the way the current policy reads is that staff are able to make up those hours. And so, an 18-hour-a-week employee would still be working 18 hours a week in the week where there was a holiday. This would allow them to take, to have that time off.
So there's a cost to it, right? Because that covered, that would be covered somewhere
I'm not sure how I could quantify that for you.
Just a comment, when she's looking at it, I'd like, I think.
Just to clarify before you, I'll, I'll finish, Dave. I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I just think before we vote on it, we should know what the cost of things we vote on.
I was going to say that, I think traditionally, in my experience, that the cost-benefit analysis is usually presented after the vetting and, you know, after the, after employers have approved it and that sort of thing. So that phase will be coming.
I thought it was interesting to see the document from HR source and some of the benchmarks. That was fair. I think, you know, we're not in public library work. We don't know what kind of common was not. I mean, I think the conversations we've had recently, especially, not especially, but given that we are a larger library, we're a five-star library, we value our staff, I think seeing us on the leading edge of some of those things was good to see. One thing I was curious about, and I don't know if this was a topic of conversation with the Equity Advisory Team, but was around floating holidays, and whether that's something that we would think of offering, especially for folks who don't celebrate Christian holidays, the ability to take time to celebrate whatever those other things are that they take time off to celebrate. I know that was something that had, you know, in the benchmarking, something that more and more libraries were, were starting to have. And I know my own employer does that, and I think it's great benefit, honestly. And so I was curious about whether that conversation had been had as part of this change.
We had talked about that at the Equity Advisory Team. One of the, the things that, in a couple of years ago, we added personal time for part-time folks. And at that time, part of the discussion was for staff to have those personal days to take for holidays and other days that they celebrated that others didn't. So we called it personal time at the time, but the intention was very similar. We did go back and forth on the idea of holiday pay, on the idea of floating holidays, but chose at this time because of the larger change being made to add part-time staff being paid for holidays, did not include floating holidays at this time.
Just a comment we also received as part of our package, and many of you saw that, I think, the document from HR source, the, the human resources consulting firm that works with, what is it, 150 libraries around Illinois to obtain qualitative data, which they then share to all libraries, so that we can tell what other libraries are doing. And quite frankly, the way I like to phrase it is what our competition is doing. And I'm saying competition for our wonderful staff people. We need to keep up. And as a matter of fact, try to be a leader in order to attract the wonderful staff people that we have and retain these people. And so, come budget time, yeah, the cost, there'll be, there will be some cost to this. I don't think any of this is going to add up to a substantial amount. But there's a cost to being able to hire and retain good people. And, you know, viewing what the rest of the libraries are doing helps us do that. And sometimes we have to add, or sometimes even maybe. sometimes we have to add, or sometimes even maybe modify some existing benefits in order to keep that staff.
Yeah, I think it was definitely beneficial to have that benchmark report, especially with the tuition reimbursement, to kind of see what's offered out there. It seems like the majority of libraries do offer that.
I agree with everything I've seen. I don't have any more questions. There's a lot of reading. Major section of our policy book. An important part, too, since, you know, about 80% of our budget is people?
Seventy, but.
Seventy-something percent is people, so.
And one of the other things that had been brought up by the Equity Advisory Team, and brought up a couple of times, was the idea of adding certain holidays. And which holidays should be added went round and round and round. There are five, the library currently has seven paid holidays. The federal paid holidays list, the ones that we don't do, that are are generally accepted paid holidays, are Martin Luther King, Presidents, Juneteenth, Columbus Day, and Veterans Day. So I just wanted to put that out there to you all, that those are, it had come up, we thought about it, were we going to propose any? We didn't, it came up again, so.
So we're not adding any holidays?
We did not suggest any at this time. But I know it had come up at previous board meetings.
So, so now it'll go to?
So we'll send it off to HR source?
And then we'll get numbers later at the next January.
Yes, it was, because it will take some time, we do not anticipate it coming to the board, to the board before the January board meeting in January.
All right, any other questions or comments regarding personnel policy? All right, we will move on to item C, cancel December board meeting.
I have a motion.
Cancel December board meeting. All right.
Why are we canceling? Why are we canceling?
At this point.
I know we've always done it, but why?
Generally, we don't have a lot of action items in December. We have had it occasionally when there has been something that that the board needed to act on. For example, when doing some previous capital needs projects, we would, if it was in the bid cycle, we would have the December board meeting so that they could vote on that. Typically, the December board meeting has to happen so early in the month that we don't have any of the financials, we don't even have the invoice list for the board to approve. And so the bills for December are generally approved in arrears in January and have been.
I think we may want to leave it penciled on our calendar for an executive session meeting, though, because I don't know that we're going to get everything done tonight that we have on the executive session agenda.
You're right.
We also have, as unpopular as, see, we have a land acknowledgement statement proposal to modify and rewrite the land acknowledgement statement. That will be, that will be actioned at the December, at the next meeting. We should have it. And to your point, that would give us a little bit of a.
Well, we have a motion in a second on deck right now. Just, do you want to whiz out that motion and make anyone? Or proceed with the vote?
I think just.
Yeah, proceed with the votes.
Yeah.
Is that right? All those in favor of canceling the December meeting, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
And all those in state?
Aye, I'm going to go with Bill on this one.
Okay.
Whichever, it's the way you phrase it.
I'm confused with the vote.
All right. Who would like to cancel the December meeting? Let's do a hand raising.
I know we may have to reinstate it for another purpose.
All right, well, for the time being, the December board meeting hasn't been canceled. All right, item D, motion to rewrite the GGPL land acknowledgement statement.
Do you think it ran? Do you want it to be ran, or?
No, I think we all have it in front of us. Does anyone have any comments or questions or Phil?
I am curious specifically about number, item four, and the statement undue influence from the ILO or ALA guidelines, and what specific objection might have either of those professional organizations?
Well, specifically, and I guess the first thing I'd point out is, this is an initial motion, this can be collaborated upon by the board, can be modified, can be amended. The specific reason I included that is because of my earlier comments about some of the influences on the document around a mindful approach to landing mountain statement referencing white supremacy culture and the best practices being narrowly focused on pointing to the injustices and harms. I want this to be a well-rounded landing acknowledgement statement. So that was my intention for putting that in there, and I will also own the typo, that undue is misspelled.
Spell check does not help you with making.
No, it's not.
Spell check doesn't do well with homonyms.
So that was the, that was the motivation. It's not intended to disparage either of those organizations. I want this to be local, organic, well-rounded, not just focus on the harms and injustices. I think, as I stated earlier, I think there's much more to Native Americans than the harms and injustices that were perpetrated. Any other questions?
No, I'm sorry, I have a computer issues. It's a cloud problem, sorry. All right, if we do not have any other comments or questions, we will be voting on that at our next meeting. Item 10, unfinished business, 2024 work plan.
You have, such as it is, I apologize again, the staff version of the work plan has an awful lot of columns to it, yes, and does not print nicely.
Four pages.
In a board packet, the, which is why we worked on the, the public version that would be a live feed to a Google Sheet that would be available on our website, and you can see the sample, it is linked from the board packet, so if you look at our board packet, you can see it. The intention would be to put that on the transparency website with all of the strategic plan information so that anybody could get the most up-to-date information on where we were on any specific strategic plan item, and look at, you know, what our target dates were for the various action steps, what the the project is, and based on on what initiatives from the high-level strategic plan, and the addendum, which includes all of the things that came out of the strategic review.
One clarification and one made request. So now, I'm just kind of now realizing that the date column is specifically the action step target date?
Yes.
Not necessarily the, how, like, when the outcome will be issued?
Yes.
So, is that, that's true?
Yes.
I might want to see then, the project metrics, the outcome column moved further right, so it kind of reads like, here's the things, here's the thing, here's who's doing it, here's the things we're doing, here's when those things will happen, and then here's what we expect to be the outcome of it.
Okay.
So that just kind of, so it reads like a more linear or a little bit more, so it's just like literally shifting, moving to the right two places. I'd like to really appreciate that column. I just want, I want to make sure that I can follow the kind of logic.
That makes sense.
Say that over time? I like, I like the sound of it, but I can't follow that.
And also having trouble.
And make sure that you're looking at the, the public version, because that staff version is, that really is what the staff is going to be working with.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the short, the short version is what the, yes.
Yeah, I think I'm, yeah.
Okay.
So what I would say, Bill, is the column is called project metrics and outcomes.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that just shifted to the right so that it kind of reads project, action steps, action step timeframe, and then outcomes, just so it kind of leaves more like narratively.
Yeah.
So like, kind of look, okay, great.
And this draft document is not the public version? The columns, the one that you're talking about?
The.
I thought it was two. We can't recognize what the.
The one that was in the packet, so it was public.
Yeah.
Well, updated.
Yeah, there's two in the packet, though. Yes, there were actually.
So the staff version and then the public, what would go on the website, a little more easier to, to read.
Follow, yeah. So one was a hyperlink, correct?
Yes. And then, the hyperlink one was actually the, the second that was in the packet, that is the public version, and that one gives strategic focus, initiative, project, project metric, yes. Project metric, outcome, action step, action step target date, and that would be.
Yes.
Yes.
Why are there two versions?
The public version, the, the staff version includes all of the staff's notes, point person, it's got a lot of our internal information on it, so we're going to make that a little easier. We can make that accessible to the board, but we also want to have the, have, and this is a direct pull, so the, the hyperlink shows the way it would look on the library's website.
I, I would say my comment still stands, and I, I didn't look at the online version, but like, it's basically the same, it's missing, like you said, the point person, which, I mean, that's interesting, but not essential, maybe, and then just the notes and the budget, which I think are more kind of more for discussion and internal use. So, but I would still like to see that project metrics shift, that's all. Because it is in the same place.
And it's funny, because we moved it there, because we thought that, that the outcome's coming after the action step, that, that it made it sound like the outcome was for the action.
I see that.
And so that's why they moved it.
I see that, yeah.
So, it, it used to be there, and we moved, and we deliberately put it where it is now.
Visually, like, I want to just like go to the end of something and see the end. And if I want to see the stuff in the middle, then I'll leave it in the middle.
Yeah, exactly.
I get that, though, that makes sense.
Okay, we can definitely move that back. I feel like the tab at the bottom as well, with the, the values. Completed steps.
Yes. Yes, we anticipate having that as the steps are completed, they will be moved into that other, that other tab so that you can see what's already been done versus what's ongoing at the time.
I just like so much what I see in this, translating the strategic plan into action. And this year, just the first year of implementation, things like improving the physical access to the building and also signage, and, and also improving access for people with disabilities and people who don't speak English and so on. That's very good program things. Teen advisory, I love that. I think that's wonderful, better facilities and, and programming for teens and tweens, that's a new word I learned this year, tween. I guess between kids and teens, they're tweens.
Yes, they are.
Expanding voter information, expanding literacy education, better stability for the internet.
I swear.
Having been here for a number of programs where Zoom comes and goes.
And Kevin may or may not get his head trimmer confiscated.
So happy to see that. Taking a look at the makeup of the, of the staff, not the existing staff, but for down the road, maybe trying to move in the direction of making our staff look a little more like the community, I like seeing that, and activities for that, because all of those things were part of the strategic plan, so. I have one question. There's one item under the access that says investigate options for building control access. Remember what that, huh?
Keys, key fobs.
Push-button locks.
It's, yeah. Yeah, card, key cards, that sort of thing.
For staff?
Yes, for staff.
For staff, yeah, okay. We're still a public library.
Yes.
You're not going to use your key fobs.
No, we're not going to hand out key fobs to the, to the public, but for, for staff and for entering and exiting staff areas, being able to update. We have a lot of push-button locks in the library right now, so looking to upgrade.
Thank you for clarifying.
That's the end.
So I'm confused, is the request to approve this entire thing lock, stock, and barrel tonight?
Yeah, it was a discussion last month.
But there's no, there's no budget and costs on any of this.
For not being able to approve those, I think so, we'll have to be doing initiatives, projects, and metrics.
But there's no costs on the projects.
Can't get costs for these things if we don't.
Well, the cost, the cost for the first step in the building space assessment is $8,500, because that is the proposal you just.
Right, but I want to make sure that when we vote and approve this, that we're not authorizing every single line item project on here to move forward without understanding what the costs are. And that's the way the motion type of reads.
These are all things that are going to be done within the budget that has already been approved for this year.
We, we don't approve everything that they charge to the expense accounts every month before they make them, those are all based on.
And some of these are significant projects, right?
I thought most, as we discussed last month, I thought most of the, almost all of them were being able to be done with, in fact, even they have the dollars within the budget.
It's within the professional services budget for this year.
I don't think any, that's the understanding I have.
Yes, that was already approved in August.
And if it's not in the budget, we'll have to discuss it at that time and approve it.
So if it's in the budget, then we already know the cost?
What, is, is there something specific that you're looking at?
Yes, my desire for fiduciary responsibility. I think, you know, if these are all in the budget, then we know what the budget is, right?
Well, things like working with District 58 to get the card form into the registration packet, that is staff time.
Okay.
There is no.
Okay, so.
Other than, than the staff time that it takes, there is no budget impact on that for.
Key fobs and new security cameras that are with you, right?
But that's investigating, that is not implementing anything, that, that is investigating what the options are and bringing proposals forth to the board.
Okay, so none of these will have any incremental costs of what's in the budget? Okay, so none of these will have any incremental costs or if it's in the budget?
Well, let's look through, let's look through the outcomes, I mean, this is what kind of what you were just doing, I think, you know, that the.
I mean, I'm just pointing out, the entire budget and cost column is blank. And we're, and we're approving the entire document.
It's a plan.
We're approving a work plan.
It's a work, yeah. And if, if there are costs that haven't been already planned, in the first place, most of this is planning, not implementation this year, which means it'll, if there are items in here where costs are developed, it'll probably go into next year's budget. The ones that are already in this year's budget are things that we've already talked about, like cameras and things of that sort, and plus any construction which is done will be estimating that, those are capital items, and we'll handle those as they come up, so.
You know, things like in, in, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I'm a fiduciary guy too, but I think we've done that already on most of these items, and where we haven't done it, we'll see what.
I'm just repeating what I heard, there are, all that's already in the budget, so we must know what the cost is, the cost column is blank, and there are some things on here that sound like they have expenditures against them, but we're approving the whole thing.
As a plan, not as.
So we're not, so good, good clarity, so we're not authorizing all these things to go forward, we're only authorizing investigating these things, is that right?
So every department here, let me get, let me just, as I understand, so every department here has a budget, yeah, and they've got that budget moving this year, so they know how much money is available for them, for the initiatives that they've already started or potentially may start based on the plan, but I guess, so just like a household budget, we're going to say, okay, well, I have $2,000 this month, just food and housing, whatever, you know some of those costs absolutely, because those are ongoing operating costs, those are things that are accounted for. Some things, depending on your plans, may need to change, but it doesn't change the fact that you have $2,000 in your budget, so, I mean, so the way most organizations that I'm familiar with operate is if you, if you have a plan and you're working toward it, and you're using the money that you have in your budget to achieve those goals, if it's needed, because a lot of these are more planning and exploratory, and that money's already contained within the budget, then that department's making decisions about what gets done and what doesn't. If it goes beyond, again, it's this random number, 2,000, if it goes beyond 2,000, okay, well, they have to make a decision. That department makes a decision on a local basis, because they are the ones in charge of putting this plan in place, about whether they can do this or whether they can do that. If it's above and beyond expense, as Dave was saying, or, you know, some of these are certainly, you know, after the planning phase, would need to go before the board, because they seem like they would be the expenses, then they become, they come before the board as above and beyond expenses. I, I mean, I, as a former, I, yeah, obviously, you want to make sure that we're staying within our budget, we're not overspending, absolutely, but I also don't want to give the decision of, okay, Caitlin, do you need to stay for this month? Because it's, you know, you have plans to do, but I don't, I don't want to get into debt, it's not our debt.
I don't think that's what I'm saying at all.
You have to, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, I want to make sure that we're trusting our staff to move things forward in a way that makes sense for their own budget and all planning, because they are professional staff, that is an expectation for their whole evidence of this, whether they are planning, they're working within the plan, within their budget, within the priorities set with the board and their editors.
And we have an overall budget of about $35,000 in our professional services line for consulting, such as this, what you just approved, the product architecture proposal. Other things that could come from that will be eventually the Shale Smith cost analysis would come from that. As, we also have money in, in different departments for professional services as well, so things like the marketing and communications department has money in their professional services line to do some translation of, of documents, and so when you're looking at the one that says, get the summer reading packets are available in at least the top three languages requested by District 58, well, we are currently investigating translation services, so we're not quite sure what they're going to cost, but we're going to be able to absorb that into that professional services budget, there's a placeholder there, and if we can do more than three, then we probably will, based on what, what the cost turns out to be. And a lot of this, because this is the first year, we weren't done with this work plan, we had to go into our budget with a lot of placeholders. As you know, this library has to have its budget to the village by August 31st for the upcoming calendar year, and there are many things that we don't have a specific budget number for, so we're putting in placeholders, we're basing things on what did we spend last year, what did we spend getting that translated into Spanish, okay? Let's estimate that we think it's going to be a little bit more than that, because these are maybe more unusual languages, let's, you know, so there are a lot of placeholders in this budget, and there always are, because we do our budget, the initial budget is done in June, and we're, and we are trying to get it as close as we can by the August board meeting.
So next year will be even better, because we'll already have that strategic plan level, so many of these exploratory projects done, and we'll have such a better sense of, well, where do we want to, okay, well, we were doing this last in 2023, but you know what, this 2024 priority, based on some of the numbers we're seeing, but we're going to shift it over there, yeah, it'll be, it'll be great this year, we have all this kind of framework.
But I mean, the bottom line is, we have, it sounds like we have no idea what this list of initiatives will cost, we just think we can absorb it in the existing budget, and I don't think that's a very responsible way to run an operation. And so I, you know, I, I have no problem with any initiative listed on here, if these are all good and are consistent with the strategic plan, that's great, but the only way I could support this is if we pass this with, you know, an investigate-only authorization on it, and if there's incremental costs associated with these, they've got to come back if they're significant.
What if they have to be?
If they're not, if they're not incremental costs, okay, they don't have to come here.
I agree with you, Bill, except that this is a planning document, not an execution document.
It's a work plan.
And it's.
And it's got a column called projects, Dave.
Well, and that is a column that ultimately will be filled in, this is a working document.
It's already filled in.
And it's a planning document, if it turns out that the price, the dollar numbers come in and we can't afford them, we won't do them.
We won't even know.
But at this stage, but we're, we're not committing we're going to do everything on here, it's a planning document. I hope we're going to do everything on here, and I think we budgeted properly before August 31st, we can do these things, but not a nickel goes out of here, but we don't vote on.
That is not true, Dave.
So if, if, no, no.
My, we can, we can agree to disagree, my opinion is that this kind of imprecise financial planning is what leads to the budget increasing year over year over year.
So if the staff in charge of these projects can keep whatever cost, if there is any associated with these projects, within the existing operational budget, is there a problem with that, to see a problem with that?
No, if it's already in the, this is the existing operational budget, then it's not incremental projects.
I like the analogy of the household budget, I know I'm going to spend $100 on food, I'm not sure whether it's going to be beans or spaghetti or what, but it's going to be food, it's going to be teen services, and if they want to take some of the money out of their teen services budget to pay the expenses to create a teen advisory room, power to them.
I don't think I'm suggesting the difference between spaghetti and cereal, I'm suggesting the difference between having one big fat household budget and actually parsing your household budget out into expense areas. This is a, we can agree to disagree, like I said, this is a list of specific projects or initiatives with a project column and a budget column, and the project column's populated and the budget column's not. If only the perception, that's not a good look, and so if we want to, for, I'll get overwritten, but for me to support this, I think we have to pass it with a, and I like Chris's wording, I think we have to pass this with a caveat that this has to be within the existing operational budget, if it's incremental, it's got to come back.
And that's exactly what it is, these are all projects that are within the existing operational budget until we start getting to capital projects, and then the board part of that planning will be brought into our budget process. So I think the space needs assessment is a perfect way to look at that, because for this year, for, for 2023 going into 2024, we're going to start with that space needs. We kept that amount in the professional services line to pay for the, the architect, the construction cost estimating services. We did not know going in what exactly the proposal from product architecture was going to be. Now we know what that number is, it is within the operational budget, we're going to go through that process, look at the options, the next step will be cost estimating, that will come back to you, we anticipate, that will also be within the budget for this year. By the time we get through all of that, then we'll be looking at the plan to move forward or not with, but making an assumption that if we are moving forward with space changes, then that cost estimate will become part of the budget process that you all approve, and we'll, and figuring out how to finance it will probably be an action step in the future.
That sounds much better than what's listed here as the recommended action, which is just to approve the work plan initiatives, projects, and metrics outcomes as presented. That does not reflect what you just said, I'm much more comfortable with what you just said.
Well, and we did talk about this during the budget process, that we had, that we were putting, that the staff was anticipating some of these things that had already risen to the top at the strategic retreat, and looking at incorporating them into what we're already doing, things like doing more make-re programs, doing more senior, I don't even remember what it's exactly.
Let me, maybe this will help.
But we already have that budget, and so it's, it's a matter of just doing that thing within the programming budget.
One of the items on here, one of the projects is creation of tween gaming social space in the kids' room adjacent to the STEM room, that sounds to me like some capital, and it says, purchase and install new gaming equipment.
Yeah, and we're doing that in this year's budget, in the capital equipment, the line for this year, we had not spent all of the money in that, in that budget line, and so most of it will come out of 2023, it won't even come out of the 2024 budget, and.
But we know what, how much it costs?
It depends on which, so we are purchasing a large screen TV, two gaming consoles, we just decided that our building operations manager is going to actually build the cabinet for the games, and we estimate that'll be about an $800 expense. We are just now putting together, as a matter of fact, we were talking just today about the cost of the furniture, there are just a couple of things we're gonna, we're gonna buy, we're mostly going to move around furniture that has already existed.
We're, I think we're all just talking past each other, I'd like to make a motion to amend the recommended action to approve the 2024 work plan initiatives, projects, and metrics outcomes as expensive, as presented, so long as they fit within the existing approved operational budget.
A second, Ed.
Sure.
Right, we have a motion and a second, he's going to do a roll call, we can, Caitlin?
Yes.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia?
Yes.
Trustee Nienberg?
Yes.
Trustee Sledak?
Yes.
President Gagati?
Yes.
All right, we have on to item 11, the executive session. Do we have a motion to move into executive session?
No, I would move to go into executive session and that the, tonight's meeting stands closed at the end of the executive session.
You need to state the purpose of the executive session, discuss a personnel issue.
All right, final second. All right, we have a motion and a second, second to move into executive session to discuss employment, followed meaning by adjournment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I would like a short break.
What we should do, probably just maybe call a special.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Did someone second it? Just give someone credit, it's fine.